Okay, I'm going to open up the regular meeting.
I'm going to open up the regular meeting of the Citrus County School Board. Let's stand for opening exercises, I'm Ms. Powers.
So I take it board members, legislators, teachers, and staff, my all part condolences to Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Thomas, remember his family in passing, his father, his family teacher, James Kennedy. I encourage us to bow our heads for a moment and observe a moment of silence as we remember family in our thoughts, reflections, and prayers, and ask that your body, faith, strength, and support that they're supposed to be there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the judicial, with liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda as recommended by superintendent.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Second?
Second.
So a motion by Ms. Balfour and a second by Ms. Dorchman. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Um, do we have any citizens' comments or items requesting approval on the agenda? A second opportunity will be available for any subject at 5:00 P.M. Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
My second?
We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Ms. Balfour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Presentation. Ms. Kirby?
Yes. Good afternoon. This is Yavlin Kirby, princess of Pleasant Grove, and I'd like to present Kylie Phillips. Kylie Phillips is one of our alumni, and this year she set out to do something remarkable. Our theme at Pleasant Grove last year was "Change Your Words, Change Your World," and Kylie really worked hard to change the world of students in need at Pleasant Grove. She set out to raise money for students in need who are beneficiaries of Blessings, Citrus County Blessings. And through her swine sale at the fair, her goal was to try to raise $5,000 to benefit those programs, and she actually raised $5,486.
Wow.
And, yeah. 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 Do you want to talk to us a little bit about Kylie? Kylie, comfortable?
Yeah. Um, so at the beginning, before I started my swine project last year, I decided that I was going to do something different, that I had, I guess I wouldn't say that I'd always thought about just buying a car with my swine money, but that had kind of been my whole basis for doing the project. Most people say that they're going to raise money for college, and not that I don't think that raising money to go to school should be done, but I was hoping that I would have scholarships to do that, and that buying a car at that point would be more important, that I could worry about schooling and would have help with that later on. So after buying my car, I decided that I was going to give back, and working with the Citrus County Blessings Program, which was then Blessings in a Backpack, through my 4-H Club, I got involved, and we actually started up the program at Pleasant Grove. We funded the startup money with a fundraiser that our club does at our Chili Cook-Off. And so that also came back to me picking that, because through 4-H, community service has become extremely important with everything that we do. Our club does many different community service projects through the year, and we've all kind of come to the point that if something happens or there's a need, that we rise to meet that need in the community. So my initial goal was to raise $5,000, and I didn't do that on my own. I actually had a lot of help with different businesses in the community and different people that stepped up and would donate what I called a dollar-a-pound donation, and so most of it was $265 towards this cause that I was raising for. So on top of that, I sold my animal at the fair for $6.25 a pound, I believe was the price, and so all of that money came together to be the $5,468. So I'd like to actually recognize Debbie Latton. She's not here today, but she helped me a lot with the project. She was really helpful to work with me when I needed anything. I needed information about the program or whatever I needed, she was always there to help me with it. And I'd also like to recognize Margaret Roddenberry, who isn't here either, but she is my 4-H leader, and so she kind of got the ball rolling and helped me find this program that I wanted to be involved with.
Very nice.
So Ms. Kirby asked if you want to say a few things. I looked at Ms. Bryan, I said, "She's a 4-Her, you know she gets a lot of attention." So we knew you would do great with that. Ah, yes, thank you. Great job, great job.
Thank you very much.
And tell us about the Chili Cook-Off, so we can ask around again, I love Chili Cook-Off. I'd like to enter. She's got two great babies, she works a lot. I know that now. Debbie Latton and Margaret Roddenberry. Ms. Roddenberry, Ms. Powers, you said she'd like to help with the Chili Cook-Off. Oh, I love it. I told her 12 and 13. I ordered my ingredients.
Okay, business and support services, Mr. Blocker. Mr. Burkaw. All righty.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Hemmelf, School Board members. I'm here to ask you to approve the continuing contract, the consultant continuing contract selection process.
I'd like, I'd ask Mr. Burkaw to explain, you know, when we of education here, continuing contract, we only have one thought, so I was asking if he could explain that to us.
Continuing.
Oh, yeah, excuse me.
I'm going to school, I'm making a donation to Pleasant Grove Elementary School from Kylie Phillips.
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Redchall. I think it was heard wrong. We have a motion by Ms. Dorchman and a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Okay, sorry, that's wrong.
Powers, continuing contract is a process we use to pre-select consultants on an annual basis. We go through the process once every three years. The initial contract period is for one year, and there's the option to renew for two more annual times, so they get renewed every year, up to three years.
So they're selected to be able to work if they are selected to work. It's not like in the schools where you continue contracts, you're there, you're working one year after the other, so it's not that long.
Correct.
So the annual approval is just as a checkpoint to make sure that they've done the job and done the job thoroughly.
Correct.
So at this point, you recommend it's just that, if they've done the job, they've done the job thoroughly, and you want to continue.
Well, actually, this time, we're at that three-year point, so we're asking approval of the process to advertise and form a committee, review proposals, and do a brand-new selection, because we're at the end of our three-year period.
Okay.
And then we'll do one year, and then next year, we'll come back to you with the request to continue.
So we're just defining the process and getting the process approved.
Correct.
Thank you, thanks for the clarification.
So these are the people that life architects, there's like three on a list, and you rotate them some projects.
Right.
You just keep them on contracts, you don't have to go out and bid jobs.
Correct.
Or smaller jobs.
Correct.
There's a friend that they have to stay with them, assuming, is there a threshold for when we have to go out and get a bid on a job or go out and do a, get a contract management?
A dollar mark?
The statutory limit for continuing contract is $2 million, estimated construction cost.
Is that for one project?
Yes. Estimated construction cost, correct.
No, it's like if they wanted to, you want to have, we'll do air conditions or whatever, as long as it's under $2 million, so we can just, the one who's up next on our list.
Correct.
I move to approve the consultant continuing contract selection.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Ms. Dorchman. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for responding. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. And to approve the agreement with PFM Asset Management LLC to serve as an investment advisory and bidding agent to the School Board of Citrus County, the issuer, in connection with the investment of the sinking fund related to the issuer's certificates of participation, Series 2010A, Qualified School Construction Bonds federally taxable issuer subsidy certificates.
Can we tell you what that is in a nutshell?
Please, I had a hard time reading it.
Essentially, we set up one of these when we first did the Christopher High School bond, that has expired, we never used it, we're just trying, we're just re-entering into that agreement. So when we start paying back our principal on the bond, the $35 million bond, it will be invested in a sinking fund or a forward delivery agreement, so those interest, we re-agree upfront to what the interest payment's going to be for the next 11 years when we enter into that agreement. So we receive interest on the principal payments that we can then use at the end to help pay off the bottom. We estimate right now, I think the interest rates that you can get are about three and a half percent that they will guarantee you, and then it'll generate over $6 million over this 11 years, so then you would use that to pay on your, for the principal. So in effect, you would make that money on the bond principal. So this is just agreement for them to go up to the bidding agent and manage those proceeds.
Okay, I'm with approval of the agreement with PFM Asset Management LLC.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Dorchman and a second by Ms. Powers. Any further questions or comments?
Just for the sinking fund and the fee for that, the total fee that the management company on.
They said it was like 2.6 basis points or about $35,000.
So $35,000.
And that would come out of the interest earnings of like $6 million or so that we estimate we would earn.
Okay, great, and I want to thank you for just walking me through the whole sinking fund.
Sure.
You gave me a sinking fund lesson that I'll never forget, so thanks for making that.
You know what, I predict you will forget it, because who can remember that stuff or something?
That's interesting terminology. Thank you very much for your patience with me.
Sinking funds involve back rates and.
It is, it is, a lot of good stuff. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Human Resources, this is.
I think that's a budget amendment.
Oh, yeah, the budget amendment number nine, sorry.
And this is a lot of stuff out there, but essentially, it's the June budget amendment, we're cleaning up, we're reducing things to actuals. I will tell you that we will have one more, because there's always some final cleanups before we submit the AFR to you in September, so we'll have the final budget amendment right before that in September, but this is what this is, is cleaning up the year-end business for all the funds.
And who's doing this now that Ms. Redfield is no longer?
Ms. Wilson and Ms. Russ are performing budget amendments as far as getting it completed.
How are we managing with that budget and structure?
Well, so far, I'm filling in, I think we're doing pretty good, so. Staff is doing a good job, I think.
So any highlights on this?
Not really, nothing out of the ordinary.
Stuff from one project to another.
Right.
Didn't find any money we didn't know we didn't have.
Well, not that we hadn't already forecasted to be already.
So we have a motion.
Still trying to.
I'll make a motion to approve budget amendment number nine.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Balfour and a second by Ms. Dorchman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Now, Mr. Bishop.
Good afternoon. I'd like to request the Board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as outlined on the Goldenrod.
Give us just a minute.
Yes, ma'am.
We have Bishop, and we have Carmen Diaz. Does Bishop relate to any bishops here?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, not, not me, no.
What is it?
We have a Carmen Diaz on our list, Cameron Diaz.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a count on how many of our old students are coming back to positions?
This year, yes, ma'am, we've hired 16 graduates in Citrus County.
How many new teachers?
Seventy-six.
How many did we get from Marion County?
Well, that's, that number's been a little fluid here lately, to be quite honest, but yeah, we've had a couple that were off of positions too, at the last minute, after they accepted the position, elected to go back.
I think at one point, we were eight.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Candace Redd from Christopher High, that's the art teacher, did she move or change positions?
That I didn't have any personal conversations with, Ms. Wing.
I didn't know.
We don't know the circumstances around that.
Okay.
What have they done about replacing Kylie Phillips?
Kylie Phillips at La Canto High School.
Director Polly Higginson.
Yes, Polly Higginson left Christopher High School and went to La Canto High School.
So who's Christopher, who's, who do we have? A brand-new teacher?
Yeah.
Can you show it with our teacher?
Yes.
Is that the new one we just hired?
Ms. Wing.
I am not aware.
But the T D teacher's saying they're tomorrow to meet them, talk.
Our teachers.
Yeah, no, no, Christopher.
Then they get away with, who was our photographer, we've seen.
Photography.
Oh, line.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yeah.
They got that, they're teaching that in another blog, but they didn't have enough.
Yeah, he was saying he might even go back as a volunteer, oh, that's going to happen, but he just really loved it.
Oh, does he want to go to another school?
Can you explain the additional days, James Perler, Jimmy Hensley, WTI teachers?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Wilson, WTI, requested 20 additional days, and the reason being that those programs that Mr. Gerlach will be teaching, HVAC, and Mr. Hensley teaching the industrial mechanics class, those are 100-day programs, and when, once the first 100 days is over, that rolls over into January, the second class or second half of the, second class of 100 days rolls into the summertime, so it doesn't finish until the end of June. There were some discussions and a decision made that rather than have those kids or those, those students come back the following school year, take a summer off and come back and finish with 25, 30 days, or in this case, 20 days, we would try to finish that up in one cycle, if that makes any sense.
It does make sense.
We can service more classes that we.
Yeah, we can start a new class back and then start the next school year.
Certainly makes sense, and that 100 days, that's based on certification program requirements, so they work out with a piece of.
It's ours, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Powers.
We had a long discussion on this thing today, didn't we?
Jessica Fider, is that Melissa Fider's daughter?
I know, I don't believe so, but I'm not a certain.
All right, I'm with approval of the instructional support recommendations.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Dorchman and a second by Ms. Balfour. Do we have any further questions or comments?
The reason Denise is trying to do this is because those students can finish in the summer, and that way, it all, she can start a rated class, and those students who had to roll over those few extra hours, they won't be taking up those seats, so they'll be able to get new students.
So we'll be able to service more students in those two programs.
Good. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero.
The next item I have is to request the Board's approval of the change of one term teacher aide to a term data secretary for the Academy of Environmental Science for the 2013-14 school year.
I'm with approval, what are we, re-classifying the term?
Yes, ma'am.
Trade to term data secretary for the Academy of Environmental Science for 2013-14.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Dorchman, a second by Ms. Balfour. Any questions or comments?
Is there being new job description for that?
Yeah, it'll be a data, it'll be a data position, a term data position, secretary.
Is there difference in pay?
Yes, ma'am.
And qualifications?
Qualifications, I don't have, they don't tell me.
Is it, is it more pay?
Yes, ma'am.
So the person who's doing the job is probably the state that's going to.
We'll have to post that position, and then they'll interview for it.
So the person who's in it now as a data secretary wouldn't necessarily be the.
It would be the selection of the Mr. Stalcheck out there, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I don't understand why we approved this, since they all are on board and.
They did take it before the Board in May, and the Board gave Mr. Stalcheck the authority to ask us to bring to the Board here, because I believe there's some financial arguments.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, these public hearings, we've already workshopped. Let's combine three of them, don't you think? One, two, three?
Okay, I'm with approval of items D1, 2, and 3, advertising in a public hearing on October 8th, A3, policy changes, 4.17, 6.37, 6.371.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Dorchman and a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Mr. Quarters.
Good afternoon, members of the School Board, Superintendent Ms. Hemmelf, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mullen, and School Board Attorney Mr. Bradshaw. We bring to you a approval for, asking for approval to purchase PD-360 District-Wide License Renewal Program for this coming school year. PD-360 is our online virtual professional staff development that we have in our district. As you remember what I brought to you before, our professional development plan that had been actually reviewed by the Department of Education, we were actually recognized for the online opportunity that PD-360 does provide to our staff in Citrus County as being a 24/7 availability for onsite, or I'm sorry, immediate professional development through videos and all sorts of things. Mrs. Worth Taylor is here, if she, to answer any of your questions, as it comes out of the Professional Development Office.
I'd ask that to be cool, so you could tell us about what would be the Common Core and the teachers that access.
Good afternoon, everyone. PD-360, as Mr. Quarters said, has been our, a resource for our teachers for self-paced professional development, and part of the purchase, the contract that we're seeking approval for, is for Common Core for K through 3 teachers. We've tried to purchase it for K-12, but it's still rather costly for us to do that within our budget, our total two funds, so we haven't done that. However, each school site, K through 12, has administrative access that gives them access to the K-12 Common Core library, so they are able to conduct professional development with their staff at the 10th grade level, they're able to do it in any of our schools, to be able to access the Common Core professional, the PD-360 library. What is different from the, this module, the Common Core module, as to others? It has extended-length segments where a lot of the questions that are coming from our teachers involves what does Common Core look like in the classrooms? So administrators and teachers, especially in K-3, can look for a certain standard, an ELA standard or a math standard, and search the library and view an extended-length lesson on several of the new Common, of the Common Core standards. So it gives them that visual representation of what does decomposing numbers look like in a kindergarten classroom. So there are some really good online videos, and then other professional development that they offer through that package. As Board members, you all do have access to the Common Core library, you have those rights. I can give you your username and password, I don't want to publicly air that right now, but it is a really good resource for those who are wanting to learn more about Common Core, or want to look, dive into the standards and see exactly what does a certain ELA standard look like, or ask students to be able to do, to master in 7th grade or in mathematics. So it's kind of.
Thank you, Ms. Worth Taylor. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve PD-360 District-Wide License Renewal to continue self, to continue to support self-based and group professional development activity support and destruction of.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Ms. Balfour. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, thank you, Ms. Worth Taylor. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Ms. Balfour and a second by Ms. Dorchman. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Mr. Bradshaw.
Thank you. Couple things, first off, I'm going to announce that we're going to have an informal hearing, excuse me, according to Florida Statute 120.57, print 2, print, scheduled for August 26, 2013, to begin at 9:00 a.m. here at the District Center Center, in regards to instructional staff member Beth Stone, who has been suspended without pay. The hearing is to provide an opportunity for the superintendent and employee to present evidence and testimony. I'll be representing the superintendent during that, in the morning, and I have Paul Sparty, who's going to come and represent the Board during that. Another thing, I was talking with Ms. Powers earlier in the week, and there's statute that has been passed now that each Board member has to receive four hours of ethics training per year. I contacted the president of the Florida School Board Training Association, who happened to be in a meeting with people at the Florida School Board Association at FADSC, and right now, we're going to put together a conference, or a four-hour training at the next FSBA, at FADSC Conference. I think it's going to probably be scheduled on a Friday morning, so you can get all four hours, and if not, they're going to, they're.
That's their way that they're going to go.
They're working with the School Board Attorneys Association and the Commission on Ethics to try to put together a program, and so if you cannot make it, then they're going to have the same program, and it's at alternate locations during the course of the year to make sure that they provide an ample.
You know, the reason why I sigh is because that Friday usually has the most important information, and those, the one in June is legislative update, and the one in December is, is important legal issues and discussion about things that are coming up, so I need to see that go and replace with this stupid ethical thing.
Stupid ethical thing, stupid.
I don't need a four-hour workshop to tell me I can't steal money, take cash from a contractor. I think, you know, it's a little insulting to make the assumption that you need that kind of training. What happens if we don't get trained? What happens if we don't get the four hours?
To legislate.
Yeah, but what's the, what's the.
What are they going to do if we don't?
I guess they'll have to remove you.
They give you a chance to talk to, they give you a chance to talk to me face-to-face. That's true, that's true. I would personally just send you a letter. You know, we, and it has been a discussion, FSBAs last year, and I, and Ms. Balfour, since you're new, you probably don't know the history of some of that, because we have a little time here to cancel the fire. We had a Broward County School Board member who was chairman, what was she chairman of? Something big.
Finance, something.
And she was taking cash payoffs from contractors who were doing business with the district, and she was in the paper bag. She's in jail.
She's in jail.
She's in jail. Her counterpart, who was an attorney, her husband somehow got lost a lot with contracts, and I don't know how some of them know it, but she worked out of a room to avoid voting because it was a real under-the-deal kind of thing. She, she's, I don't know, she got arrested, she certainly lost her job. I think she did get arrested, actually. Then it was, who was the lady, was it Escampia County? A couple of years ago, then they tell you all these horror stories when you first get elected, the one, the first thing they do when you get elected, the first day is we sit you down, we talk to you about the sunshine block, and about all the ways you can go to jail.
Welcome to the world.
Yeah, I mean, they really do, they scare. Yeah, I mean, they really do, they scare you, but these were real things and so, especially because of the Broward County incident. And oh, also, our dear Mike, where's Mr. Blacker, Mike?
Oh, Mike Baldwin.
Mike Baldwin. He was one of our financial consultants who got heavily involved with Palm Beach County school board member. He also lost their jobs. They just, let's say they've decided that, is it all like the officials, not just school board members?
The school board members, finance directors, and I think that's a public, I think the superintendent also.
Not county commissioners?
Why not county commissioners? Oh, good, good, good. I don't want them to be left out.
But the school board members have raised themselves in a very large way over the last three or four years. It really has been terrible. And these are people who are very, very active in the Florida School Board Association, had a very large presence in leadership and it was really shocking to all of us.
So it's why you're in the middle of training.
I guess, but I guess the legislators thought we needed help. We need to be told, don't take bribes. Don't violate the law. And we've also had school board members who've gone to jail because their budgets went into the rep. That's also a penalty. So there's a, there's a number of violations, there's no way you can find your way to jail.
See if we can make it rolling.
Okay. And then I think it was two or three Palm Beach County commissioners that were in jail. They're also sort of that same chakra as that of one from Broward County.
It's Florida.
It's really, it's very shocking and that's why it's...
It is not Florida.
I see it's climate that we're in now, there is so much attention to all of this athletic stuff. You read about the people about Weatherford and his relationship with the citizens insurance. There was something else that came out the other day, so I guess we go under the...
Do you have anything else, Mr. Bradshaw?
No, ma'am, that's all.
All righty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Miss Hemel, do you have anything?
Mr. Thomas is getting ready to fit together with PD Calendar Committee in the middle of September. The first question is, do you all want Thomas to stay on that committee?
Yes.
Okay, and if you've got anything that you think you can't figure out from the calendar or current calendar, just shoot him an email or just let him know.
You know, I think one of the things that I have a concern about is I was driving my IMS this morning and I saw the slide, half day, August 28. That's going to be the beginning, I know Mr. Thomas, you're watching, I'm sorry, the beginning of our professional training, half days. I would really like to know, I would really like to have a little experience with that first before we go through and make recommendations for next year.
Okay. And Lyndy's got calendars on all the professional development and staff development for those half days, so as it gets closer, she'll, you know, you know you're comfortable reading what's going on.
Well, I'm looking for it.
So we can monitor that.
In fact, I have parents.
Right. And as far as the calendar is concerned, do we have the opportunity to send a waiver so that we can have the finals end in December for this high school?
Our waiver's good for two years. So once we did that and we were exempt for two years, we can...
Waiver for what?
For our performance.
All right, Ms. Powers and Ms. Dorchman, come up with one of your committee assignments to give to Ms. Balfour.
Okay.
And we'll have Mr. Kennedy do that later. I'm going to give Ms. Balfour a long-range planning committee with Chuck Dixon, elementary, middle, and high school rezoning. It's, if he's got it, it'll be out of his finances, please, Kate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can't give up a committee because I don't, these don't exist. Their safety committee, they need, they never called me, safety. And the wellness initiative, I didn't even know I was on that. I have a high school people progression plan at SEAC. It's, I, I, why would I give somebody one and then have one, they have two?
Okay. Ms. Powers?
And I was looking at, uh, the gifted advisory council, it hasn't been in forever, so I don't, I don't know, you know, if it's still existing, Miss Hemel, things that...
I'm here to tell you, long-range planning committee needs Ms. Balfour.
Right, and the organization for the gift is the same thing, so we have to ask Nancy if they're going to continue this year. The others are very active and I'm on those, so would you like the gifted advisory council?
I'd be asking Mr. Kennedy, he's on, he goes to a lot of things.
Okay, maybe asking Mr. Kennedy too, because I know he did mention the organization for the gift, but the gifted advisory council. Let's check with Nancy and with Thomas, yeah. But the others, I'm always active in the conduct and...
I know you are.
Most school, school health advisors, I might to keep this.
So if Thomas comes back, we'll...
Yes.
All righty.
Thank you so far.
You're welcome. All right, do you have anything, Ms. Dorchman?
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to have the State of the District one.
All good, well, we're waiting on our hearing because we scheduled it to start August 27.
All right.
So we're...
Twenty-six.
Well, twenty-six and we're holding the twenty-seventh, so Fratchell thinks it'll be done in one day after they do all the simulations, so if not, then we'll have to reschedule that. If we don't get that...
Okay, so I have another question. If, if we have time for a workshop or we don't have time for the State of the District, Eric kind of prompted me into thinking this, as well as our conversations ongoing about Common Core, is that we really haven't had presentations about Common Core. You know, our teachers have begun to have training, but we haven't really...
Mr. Flies, no, he's, he's working on doing that.
Okay, nevermind.
I thought I gave that presentation last spring and that's when we got, we talked about the Common Core and then the math, and then we also had some sample-like items.
Yeah, we did.
But we need to, but also, and we've talked about that a little bit this morning, they need an update from the teachers on the Common Core training they went through this summer and because we're meeting with principals next week and we're going to talk about how they're going to do their Common Core sharing to all the staff, so that could be part of the State of District, maybe that's the worst piece we do.
Okay, so, so here's kind of the questions that I would have, you know, again, what are the requirements of Common Core and how, and, you know, when we talked about Common Core to begin with, this is a, this is a evolving topic. We were K-2 and then we were talking about keyboarding skills and now we can now have some sure, we can do the testing, I mean, there's a lot of components that keep changing. So I think we need to have an up-to-date analysis of exactly where we are with Common Core. What kind of changes to curriculum are we already experiencing and what are we going to experience in the future? The teaching strategies, I know you had some, had some discussion about that, but now we have maybe some more real-time examples as people are beginning, beginning to implement it in the classroom or what they're being trained differently than how they've ever taught before. And we probably need to look again at the timelines, although I know those may change, and also the testing requirements that also may change because we don't know where we'll go with Park. But, you know, we can't ignore Park like he's going to go away because Tony left and the Weatherford and Mumford, not Mumford, Gates asked for a waiver from Park and I guess, I guess no one's acted on it yet, but Pam Stewart seemed to indicate yesterday, she met with people in Tampa, that she was going to come out with some sort of recommendation, but so far...
We've got a superintendent's conference going for her.
Okay.
All right. Any else, Ms. Dorchman?
Um, no, so, well, yes.
Let me ask this question, so maybe our, that meeting, if we've got time that day
and we won't know on the 27th.
We're going to be done on the 26th, we'll be up to state that night.
Okay.
So maybe we do our Common Core update on the 27th and start with that.
All right, but we still need our State of the, State of the District. But, you know, we, and we've talked about this before, the State of the District sometimes has so much data that it gets to be a little fatiguing. So maybe we want to have part one and part two, maybe part one in August, part two September, and maybe we want to look at those components that have been most controversial, including the school grading and changes to the scoring and that sort of thing, review that data and then maybe next time drill down to some other kind of data that is also relevant.
We even looked at maybe three workshops for the State of District because, was it last year or the year before, I mean, we went all day.
All days, for the office.
It was long, it was long.
We had two actual State of Districts and the first one actually emphasized the scores and the results. Again, you understand, that goes into dual enrollment, AP, all sorts of things like that. The one thing that we were basically going to share with you is that you've seen a lot of changes in the 1076. Obviously, we thought that the board would want an overview of what those new graduation requirements are going to be, including as well as what changes are at the middle school level as well. So, yeah, I need some real direction as far as what specifically you would like at that, in those, in those State of District areas.
Well, that is a good one. Because that was really significant, it's very important to compare last year.
Why, because it changed every year?
It was crazy and then it cut you down to being, you know, unmanageable, right? I was just looking through a notebook I had, it was, you know, the 15 different colors of every year, different graduation. So I was, oh, I don't know that one. We spend so much time and energy learning about what the requirements and expectations are and then the next year they change.
They change, yes.
And we've got a great spreadsheet that Gail Nobles developed that, I think the gold rod was her last one with Gail.
But it's, I'm working on it.
And she's working on that. So we'll, we'll put one of those in y'all's boxes just so you'll have them and then you'll just have to know that if something changes, we'll keep adding to that for those kind of things too. So we will get that story.
I'm sorry, I missed something there. Going back to the committees, and this may roll into what we're talking about, just trying to understand the process. Looking at the committees that we have right now, we're missing a curriculum development committee. Is the, developing instruction strategies to help infuse technology throughout K-12 is imperative with the movement that's taken place out there. Is there, is, is there some avenue where through maybe one of these committees that that kind of dialogue is taking place? And if so, can I be on that committee?
We actually, Ms. Balfour, meet on a regular basis with our curriculum toses and that sometimes consists of principals. We have a variety of meetings that we hold throughout the year. Mr. Hebert actually is on board and will facilitate the elementary curriculum toses and they meet on a monthly basis. Because of the no director secondary, myself and Gail Nobles meets with the secondary curriculum toses and assistant principals because the high schools do not have that. We meet on a regular basis, it's every month. We actually have our first meeting on the 23rd and that's really the core of where we basically meet with those folks in regards to that.
Develop a committee label for that so that we can have a continuous board presence as they dialogue and look through.
I would suggest... Thomas is on about everyone that...
I would, just remember, I would do it to that one because once the board directs us to have that committee, it's open to the sunshine.
Okay.
Okay, which, but if there's some kind of committee y'all want to develop to do something like that, then we can develop a committee.
But as far as me participating or just being the one who walked, what I want is, do I have an invitation to come to your tosa meeting there, Mr. Clutter?
I got something, Ms. Hemel is...
No, that's fine. Well, here's what I'll say about this. You can't be a fly-in hall because you're more, well, just a second, okay? I've been here in the long years, I'll tell you, with 15 years' experience, you will not go anywhere where you are not a board member and you are not going to be treated deferentially and be walked around as far as you're the board member. So it's a nice idea to participate as a member of the school community, but I would say that you never are able to step out of that role as being a school member and you'll find that.
So that I'll have my name tag on as that fly, but my goal is just to not fracture the momentum of the task at hand.
Well, you'll be a disruption.
And, and that's my, my, my goal is not to be...
I'm just being really honest with you because you're, because, you know, you haven't had the ability, the experience to, to understand how you will, how you are perceived by staff, by teachers, by principals and administrators. And, Mr. Clutter, am I wrong about that? I'm still ma'am in Publix. It's, it's, I have, it's, it's a, it's a hard thing sometimes in this Balfour to understand that because you say to people, look, you know, it's, it's just being, you know, you know, we're all, but...
Well, and again, my goal is not to be a stumbling block in the process. My goal is to have a deeper understanding of how we're going to infuse Common Core instruction. I want to have a deeper understanding of what the dollars that are being spent on technology, exactly how we're going to have instructional practices with those tools. I, I need a deeper understanding. The only way I can get that deeper understanding is, is being at the meeting, whether I'm an active participant or I just sit there and observe and absorb what's happening around me. I have no intentions of doing other, anything other than supporting the cause. With elementary, middle, and high school background as well as college experiences, I've, I've got some things I can bring to the table and I can share if that is a comfortable moment for you. Again, I understand the role and I definitely understand the perception of the role and I think that perception may need to be altered. I need people to welcome school board members and to understand that we are here to support, encourage, reward, and, and come together as a team. And I feel it's real important as an ambassador role, I feel that that's just part of the job. So if you tell me that you don't want me there, that, I'll, I'll swallow that pill.
Here's what happens in those meetings and one Mark's referring to is more of a staff meeting where he brings them together. And whether reality is, and probably sometimes when I sit in this meeting, people aren't opening, they're not as open when a board member sits there. And, and I will tell you, our board members, and you will too, have tried over and over to say, I just want to be here as an individual and that doesn't happen. And then the other thing is they expect, once you say something, whether it's you or any of these, they're speaking to the board.
Right.
And you will never, ever change that, whether it's mentality or perception, but if there's, if there's a board-directed committee, then we could have all been wrong. And so, and I will tell you, the best way to learn, and I know you know, we is out in schools and talking to those curriculum specialists and being at their SAC meetings and those kind of things too, but...
And the other thing is to ask for presentation, ask, you need information, assume that the rest of us need the same information. If you want to ask and get information from somebody, assume that it would be equally...
Valuable.
Valuable to the rest of us. At, at the same time, we have to caution ourselves about asking too much because we are single board members. So when you go and you meet with a staff member, you're not there as, you're not there representing the board, you're there as yourself. But if you ask for something, they are going to go out of their way, spend a lot of time producing information for you. And so, you know, this is, I'm glad this came up because I have this in the back of my head and I forgot to, to bring it up. I, I shared with Ms. Balfour, I get the American School Board Journal online and every August they have new school board member, like boot camp thing, and every year they have a different one. And I sent her a copy of it, I should have sent, I should have brought you all the copies too because it's, it's interesting reading. But, Ms. Balfour, what we have done in the past, and it was a very good discussion, is that we as a board in a workshop setting our work session, talk about how we act as board members, how do we get information, what's the chain of command, what's the protocol, what do we all agree on as our operational methodology, I guess?
Hemel.
Yeah, and, and we all try to follow those same rules. I mean, you know, nobody can say to you how to do your job, but we have a joint agreement about how we as five individual board members are going to conduct ourselves in the school system and our relationships and expectations of the staff. And then we tell the staff, don't you let one of us...
Tell you what to do.
Tell you what to do. Don't you sit there and give a bunch of stuff to one board member. If there's something that you want to know and there's something that you want to have, you should bring it to this board and have the majority of us go through consent.
And I agree with you, I totally understand and thank goodness Linda Verderoni...
Yes, she's the best.
Walked me through a very thorough description, four hours of training, thank you, Linda, of exactly where the line is between the board members, the staff, and the superintendent. And I appreciated her gracious, her, just her patience with me.
She's so patient.
She is, she knows her stuff. And I definitely understand the boundaries, I know where the line is.
Okay, well, here's what is important though, we as a group need to understand collectively what we all agree on. So when Thomas was new, we had this, we had a workshop and we had a conversation. I would suggest that we can certainly do that, just set some time aside, just for board member discussion.
Sure.
I think as time goes by, we'll see, especially in our head services team, all the presentations they bring, like he'll, in a couple of months, he'll bring updates on where we are... I think as time goes by, we'll see, especially in our head services team, all the presentations they bring, like he'll, in a couple of months, he'll bring updates on where we are on core when we do that piece, but also how we're timing the technology and we do the budget. I think you'll be pleased, pleasantly surprised how often we bring up to the board with the information, so.
Right, but it's, it's certainly our job to ask the questions, and it's certainly our job to request information. But it's beneficial for it to be something that we all can discuss and have access to at the same time. And the only time that we can sit down and talk to each other about our perceptions or the questions that we have, I want to hear your questions, I want to know what your questions are. I want to know what your perspective is coming right out of the classroom, I need to know that, that's valuable to me. So that's why we have workshops and we have work sessions so that we have that opportunity to discuss and ask those questions and ask for information that we all collectively join in together. So, and I'm more, I'm much more stand-off than the rest of you guys. You guys are comfortable just walking into a classroom.
Yeah, we are.
And I am not, because I know what it's like when I'm working, if someone comes and calls on me, I stop what I'm doing, and I gotta go, you know, it's, it's fine. But you've been in the classroom, you know when you're disrupting someone or when you're not. I've never been a teacher, so I don't do that. I go, I go by appointment, I go on invitation, I go for specific things. I don't just go walk through the school.
You go to science fairs, yes you do.
Science stuff, that's my different style. Your, your style, my thing is to go walk through the school.
I welcome the workshop to talk about the different styles and to just share the different strategies of meeting our job description, we'll love that opportunity, definitely.
Great. Ms. Powers.
Okay, I have my list.
Oh my gosh, you've got three minutes.
Minutes, I can't do it.
Okay, well, we'll stop at five for our public here, our assistants, not us.
Firstly, just wanted to say something to Phyllis, we've learned so much.
Oh, that's right.
Working, you, you trying to keep us all on task and do what we're supposed to be doing, it's been an incredible pleasure. And this is the last meeting that you'll be with us, so.
Now I'm gonna cry.
I will see you every day walking.
She gets her grandson Thursday, she, she'll forget all about Thursday.
Just appreciate you so much and thank you so much for all the years.
I really appreciate it.
Now, the one that you all always hear from me this type of year, you know what's coming up, it's the Festival of the Arts.
Oh, November, November, the first weekend of November, I got it.
That's right, I said that much. It's the first weekend of November, Saturday, November 2nd, and Sunday, November 3rd. And on October 31st, we're having the social, which is to benefit students for scholarships, three fifteen hundred dollar fellowships we raised the money for. And it just so happens.
October 31st?
October 31st.
Isn't that Halloween?
That's right, Halloween.
Are you dressing up?
Not a chance. It's your suggestion of how I should dress, and then man says, but I, I do have tickets for that social. Anytime you want to get them, I have them somewhere.
All right, we'll get them for you.
For the Festival of the Arts, y'all know about it, but.
I'm gonna call, I'm just bummed. And, oh, yeah.
Not usually, because I fix the checkup, but, no, no, Jared, and there's, there's another person.
Yeah.
Other person, no. And this just tells you about the festival, what it is and what's there. The students, of course, they have the, they're under the tent, and they have an incredible display of the art. Judges that come from the colleges to, to talk with them and do a little like a discussion. Are you clearing your throat because it's time for me to shut up? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I counted off. Also, the Chronicle this year was, is involved as it was a year before with Art Outside the Box. Deb Kamla is, is sort of spearheading that, and that's where we have the Chronicle newspaper boxes. They were sanded and basically put on my WTI, and they're going out to the schools Thursday. And then the art classes for different schools, different high schools, it'll be specific, will paint it, and you saw last year, or year before, excuse me, what happened with that. I have, I just brought one copy of that, but I'll pass it down to you just to remind you what some of the boxes look like, and they're placed throughout the community. And there's judging done at the festival, and you get first, second, third place, excuse me, very, very nice. So invite everyone. Digital.
Oh, good.
Really? They need, they get covered on them?
They, they sand them.
They sand them all down, do base, turn it all over again.
Oh, that's interesting.
This is just picture, one of the students receiving a fifty hundred dollar scholarship, as I said, and three of them for high school seniors have given with the money that's raised on the social, so. I'll just pass it back to, pass it back to me. Still have more, so you want me to shut up now?
Please, we'll have Quentin Herron who'd like to speak to us. Please state your name when you get to the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Quentin Herron, and if I might presume to welcome Mrs. Balfour to the board, could be a positive force here. I'm gonna go off script here for a second. I noticed your comments concerning Mrs. Balfour's desire to participate. Being a military person, I remember stories of military commanders who, in times of conflict, combat and whatever, would remove their rank in the CBI and present themselves in mess halls and, and hospitals, there's troops, to see how they lived and how they acted. So I think that perhaps removing your rank in the CBI to go to a school, which is my first question by the way, might benefit the school. My question, Ms. Balfour, you're exempt from this question, you'll see why in a second. My question simply is this, since becoming a member of the Citrus County School Board, how many days have you spent as a substitute teacher in a classroom, academic classroom, at a middle school or high school in Citrus County, now I stress substitute teacher, not observer or assistant? And academic, not meaning art or PE or, or a homemaker or something like that.
Are you asking us?
Yes, certainly, yeah.
Are you not allowed to?
We're allowed, zero.
You're not allowed to go?
It's against law.
And that's, that is law of what, state of Florida?
Mm-hmm.
Well, they would be, they're, they're the employer, and the substitute works for them.
I see. So you, you can't substitute, substitute class at all in any way, shape, or form, right?
However, none of us mentor and tutor, we've done that, we're allowed to do that.
Can't be substituted.
But we can't be a substitute.
And they're in the classrooms all the time.
All the time.
But the person said she doesn't just bounce in.
Well, yeah, I know, I, I'm aware of your, of your presence at schools occasionally, but you're always accompanied by an administrator who.
No, we're not.
Kind of shoot.
No, we're not.
All right, I will, I'll become mad about that. I'm just saying that, that, in my opinion, because of the, the elevation you are, or in the hierarchy of the school, you're shielded too much by yes people. And you don't see what, what is happening in the schools themselves on a day-to-day basis for the frontline teachers. It seems to me that the kids, for the most part, they, they can't add, they can't read, they can't think, they can't reason, but by gosh, they know their rights. And it behooves, the board to remind them they have responsibilities as well as rights, and insist that Phyllis responsibly, remind the parents also. But my main point today is this, I'd like to address the recent downgrading of the schools. With complete candor, without, again, not being too dramatic, I'm kind of surprised it took so long. Due to some fancy political footwork, you're only downgraded one letter grade. When truth be told, it could have done, it should have done much worse. Basic information I have published. My, based my conclusion, for many reasons, and I'll say only one today, meant is this, if our primary and middle schools have done such a great job in the past years, they've all got A and B ratings, why have our high school teachers at all grade levels had to teach thirty minutes of remedial reading, reading comprehension, and they're already a separate, benchmark packed curriculum?
Your time is up, sir.
Yeah, sir, it is. No answers? The question was, well, I think that, if you can read the transcript if you wish to, my question was, why do our high school teachers have to have thirty minutes of reading and reading comprehension? They should have been taught this back in elementary and primary schools, and middle schools, I mean.
I think we'd love to give the answer, a detailed answer. I know Mr. Clotter could go through and show the different types of testing and what is the comprehension that is, is tested at high school level versus elementary. Maybe you can get up with him and, and let him have an explanation, because I, I too want to ask almost the same question, okay, what's happening here? But different things are, are being required of the students at different levels, and maybe you can talk with Mr. Clotter and get an understanding of that.
I don't hold that, Mrs. Powers, like you, I remember being in third grade and crying, because my mother made me step until all hours at night, like seven-thirty or so, learning how to read, okay? So I got to high school, I knew how to read. Thanks for your time.
I'd like to respond to a couple of things you said. When you say our kids can't read, write, and do other things.
Many of them cannot.
No, I don't know what statistics you have on that, please, because when you talk about the grades failing this year, I don't know that you or many of the public, which we're going to be able to come out with, understands how they've changed the scoring on our tests. We're now being, our kids are being graded now on more what we call gains from year to year. I just talked to a superintendent yesterday, they had a student last year in the seventh grade score perfect on all FCAT scores. This year, the kid received a perfect score on all FCAT, except he missed one question. He doesn't get credit for that kid. So the score, we've had seventeen changes this year, just in the way they change for our assessments, testing, and the way we grade our kids. We talk about political, whatever you called it, about our grades, our county grade was still a B, there was no, because that's based on points. So I'm not sure where you're getting your facts from, but we can certainly meet with you one-on-one, we can have curriculum people sit down and explain that, but I'm not sure where you're getting your facts from. And when you talk about our students, many of our students can't read, write, I don't think you're talking about our kids in Citrus County.
Then my question goes back to my, I'm running over again, my question goes back to our original question. If our students can read, okay, and, and again, it's reading comprehension, I cannot, in my high school, they, they, you remember a teacher having to sit down with my class and take thirty minutes of remedial reading and reading comprehension?
Well, first of all, every high school teacher does not teach thirty minutes of remedial reading.
Beg your pardon?
Are you, that referred to our high school teachers, every one of them teaching.
All grade levels.
Thirty minutes of remedial reading, that is.
Reading and reading comprehension.
Very far from the truth. But what we do is our teachers do teach reading across the content areas. Because they want to get relevance. But this is a long, drawn-out conversation that you need to sit down with our curriculum team so that.
I, I can assure you I shall.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Powers, we're back to you.
Okay, just a little bit left, there's a little bit left. I, I mentioned it early, that tomorrow I'm gonna go to Christopher High School and talk to the art teachers, and then I'll go to La Canta too, and everything again.
We got information from Mr. Bishop, who's the art teachers are.
I did, very much, I got the list, so there are a lot of new people that are gonna change, and I'll be talking to them, and just in preparation for our festival, which will generate the money for the.
Scholarships, yes, I'm, I'm with you, please, I'm with you.
And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Balfour.
The Rock Crusher Elementary School, open house, with your crowd. Got a lot of people there that thought it was a disruption, the lines were deep. It was, it was good that I was there, I was able to jump right in.
Yeah, like going home.
It was, it was, it was fun. I stopped by Renaissance Center, just had the opportunity, I've never been, so I was anxious for the opportunity, just walked the halls. And it was fun to see so many people that I've worked with before over at the Renaissance Center. And then I had to go back to the academy for the first day of school, and I tell you what, that was a tough one, to walk away. But they all understood that my new role is, is still keeping a connection with them, so it was a really tough day, and.
You were roaming the halls of the academy, first day of school.
Wow. I wanted them to know, because some of those kids I've had for three years in a row, and I enjoyed it just walking away. So I just needed them to see that I'm still connected. And then two full days from eight-thirty to five-thirty of leadership training, I wanted to make this Thursday and Friday, and then multiple hours of free walking around the park trying to figure out safety funds and terminology, and then just regular, just regular.
Good, good. Ms. Mullin, all right, Mr. Bradshaw, we're back to you.
One thing I need to point forward, we need to give a vote for this, done most likely, is, I think this is back about the time that I started, closer to the time that Mr. Blocker started, there was a building by the name of Paul Schultz, who spent a lot of money in the trust, and then he subsequently funded more money into the trust, and the trust is designed to only give scholarships to certain students coming out of the Citrus County school system for, for scholarships. Unfortunately, when it was done, the trust agreement was not very heartfully drafted, and so I've contacted, or Mr. Schultz got in touch with Mr. Blocker. Part of the problem was is the way, we have control over the monies right now, and the investment restrictions that are placed upon the school district not lend itself to that, I think it was about a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's just not making the return.
It's not making the return. So what Mr. Schultz wants to do is, he wants to kind of take control back over that money so that he can continue to use it for, for scholarships. He's had an attorney who sent me his, it's a favorable trust agreement, it creates a charitable trust, the term of the trust arm of the monies are only to be used for scholarships. And I've looked at it, and it'll be probably more managed by a couple of, a couple of people, one of them will be our district's, I don't know, Mr. Alex Redd is listening, she's figuring this out, but, you know, the Director of Student Services and Mr. Schultz and a couple of other people. So then he can try to, he wants to generate more income to give this. The long and the short of it is, is that to really modify the old trust into the new trust, we need to enter into a friendly lawsuit and give that judicial order modifying the terms of the old trust because it really didn't have a lot of language in there about the ability to modify it or amend, and so it would be a friendly suit, is what it is. But because the board is wanting to give a redirection on the order, I would ask that the board, you know, allow that lawsuit to happen and basically be filing a lawsuit and then stipulated order just modifying it for the money and testing.
Okay, so how is that handled in the local?
Well, it essentially allows Mr. Schultz to take back control of the trust so he can invest the money to make more interest and then give out more scholarships. And now we're kind of tied to our investment policy and we can't. I know Mr. Bradshaw and who's, have been working on this, yeah.
So he, I mean, he wants it, I think there's a benefit to him also, I mean, of being a charitable remainder trust, and he'll get a five-o, one-on-one, three-seed status, so, which is good for him. But it also increases, it's basically the scholarship portion, you know.
So they really know what they're waiting to get out of it because there's no clause.
There is one, there is one clause, there's a exit clause, so to speak, but it's like to give it to some foundation in Oakland, California.
Yeah, so it's.
Right, so it'd need to be modified anyhow to, I'm not quite sure who drafted it, but I don't think it was legal counsel, so.
Didn't have a legal lease, Tom, Tom.
Right, but it's really just a, move it back over and let it, do what he's intended. He's actually with more money into it, a couple of agents dedicated to doing this, so, but I would need the board to go ahead and give me permission to interpret for this year. That's all, what I'd probably ask is if you were willing, so maybe there's a motion to allow me to file a lawsuit or to defend a lawsuit that the board, I'll probably get the board to judicially modify.
Please get them to pay for it.
How much is this gonna cost us?
I don't think it'll cost us.
Will the legal lease will be included as part of your attainment?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a motion, Ms. Dorstman?
That'll be part of my submission.
I'll move a little. Forward with this lawsuit as long as Mr. Bradshaw does as part of his program.
Ms. Powers, seconded, we have a motion by Ms. Dorstman, a second by Ms. Powers, all is favor, aha, motion carries for a zero.
It's your contribution to the scholarship.
It's my contribution to the scholarship, exactly.
Oh, please.
I too want to say to Phyllis, thanks for everything she's done for our district, thirty-seven, thirty-eight years. She leads us going through five, surviving five superintendents, plus she knows a lot of their secrets, she knows my secrets, she knows exactly what I weigh. She knows all those wonderful things that we can't tell everybody, but, and her lips are zipped, and she's been a blessing to Citrus County schools, and we're truly kind of missed her, so. Yeah, and you all know, I think I've said this to you before, we are not replacing Phyllis, first of all, I guess she's not replaceable. First of all, I guess she's not replaceable. That's true. But so all, everything will filter towards Linda and Beth, so we'll do the best we can to, we best schools to eliminate support staff, so we're gonna give it a whirl for this year.
Because you don't feel as if we needed to record your voice, you know, but I have told more of our employees, you need to call the school board office and listen to how this woman handles phone every single time, with song and voice, and pleasantness, and welcoming, and happiness, no matter what you're feeling, no matter what's going on,[1760.12]